I give you a copy of the town law.
I don't know. That's all I see is two pages.
Yep, that's what I got.
In the town law, the way I interpret it says you have to have two. You have to have two written requests for a special meeting from councilman. I know it doesn't matter to you. Could you just do what you please?
You got it written all this, right?
Yes.
And you got the electronic email?
Yes, I did.
Which is what the Association of Towns.
That's all right. I'll just forward to the controller's office and ask them to avoid everything that happens here today because this is not a legal meeting.
Ooh, venison.
Being dressed out of 210.
There was one online. This guy shows a picture of this great big burly deer. Deer. He looks like he's been on steroids. The caption says, "This one passed within 20 hours." Because he's too damn big to drag out of the woods.
Be happy with me.
Oh, pen.
I didn't sign it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I forgot to even sign it. Sorry, people get up on Saturday. People get up on Saturday.
Oh, that's all right. That's all right. It's time to go normally.
Are you here? I think this is. This one's got coffee.
The flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Here. Mr. Newton?
Here.
He's not here. Mr. Facto?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Here.
All right. The board of members have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. A motion will be entertained to approve and accept the minutes there to regular meeting on October 25th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. And again, for the public hearing on October 25th, 2022, can I get any motion?
A move.
Mr. Facto? Mr. Newton, second.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Okay, I guess these I have nine communications.
Monthly reports?
All right, we got communications first.
Oh, just don't print it. Okay, go ahead.
This is Duntravdineal. Yeah, that's the one that was posted. This is the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I received a communication from one of the council members posting on our website. It was in direct response to a special meeting notice that was put out on our website. I will read that into the record today. Special meeting, November 19th of 2022. The town of Scotta Falls will hold a special meeting on November 19th of 2022 at 10:00 a.m. located at the town hall, 997 Mason Street, Marsville, New York, 12962. This meeting replaces the regular meeting that was scheduled to be held on November 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the same location as above. So if there are inconvenience, this may have caused our residents in the town as there was some confusion of a matter of order. The problem arose when the posting of the meeting was not placed to our town website a full 24 hours in advance. The question was then raised if conducting this meeting would be legal under open meetings law. The question was raised by a resident of the town of Scotta Falls. I explained that all, as long as we had taken due diligence and requested it to be placed on the town website, we could proceed with the meeting as this was beyond our control, that the task was not completed in a timely manner. I further explained that it had been requested to be put up on the town website on 11/10/22. A town councilman agreed with the resident and refused to stay and attend the meeting thereby leaving us without a quorum. The issue has been clarified by New York State Association of Towns, who also gave the town the same advice as our attorney. If an attempt has been made to confirm or to conform with the law and it was through no fault of the town that a notice was not posted either to the media press or to the town website, then the meeting not only can proceed but should proceed in the best interest of the town and its residents. Again, my apologies for any inconvenience this may have caused you. Respectfully, Kevin J. Randall. And this was set out because it is very unusual to have a Saturday meeting here. And the residents of this town should have been notified as to why that was necessary. Okay? And it further went to back up the importance of our website manager to make sure that his inactions do have consequences. So that was the intent of this letter. Again, communication that I got from a councilman gave this. I'm going to read this into the record also. This was put on a media webpage, so therefore it is public information. This is from Mr. Donah. I went to the town of Scotta Falls website and saw that Mr. Randall's post blaming me and Mr. Facto for what happened last Tuesday. Well, as I recall, Mr. Randall stated at the record meeting that he did not have access to the website because he did not have a password for it. He had access to post so he could blame us but not to post a agenda. When we tell so many lies, sometimes you forget what you already said. Honestly, honesty is the best policy. But being honest means sometimes you have to admit you screwed up. I don't forget the final words. Tuesday night to me, Mr. Randall kept, "Keep coming at me." That's in quotations. It's an incomplete quote. I'll set the record straight on that also. Which I believe was said in anger. Believe me, Mr. Randall, until you can run this town honestly and with integrity and respect for the people, I intend to do just that, which I take as a threat.
Take it any way you want.
Can I, could I at least say something?
I'm going to finish this and then you can say whatever you want. Okay? First of all, here are all the emails, and I'll show the councilman up here. These are all the emails. To Pat, which is our website manager. This one starts out on November 10th of 2022. Okay? This is an email on the 10th saying to Pat, "This is the agenda for the regular monthly meeting of November 15th, 2022. We are having it early due to the Thanksgiving holiday. If you could get this up now, it would be great." So there is the original post and there is the original agenda that I posted to him. You want to see it?
No.
November 15th. It was sent out on the 10th of November to you because it didn't get posted on time. So this was at 9:53 a.m. in the morning after I had sent an email to him saying he needs to repost it. 9:15 at 10:05. I sent you this last week. Also, did you get the email? Again, this was on the ZBA board to make sure the ZBA board agenda was posted. Wednesday, November 16th. Hi, Pat. There are two I need to put up for a special meeting on Saturday, the 19th. Please let me know when they are posted. Also, don't forget the ZBA board agenda that needs to be posted now also because it still wasn't up there. So this is the request for the special meeting. And there is a special meeting agenda. Then there was the second one, which is that letter I just wrote into the, read into the record that he posted. Again, those were all lies and that.
Well, I'm going to take an opportunity to defend myself also on this subject.
You, you can talk.
I'm heavier. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. On November 16th, 2022, here's Pat saying that everything was posted. Both of them. November 16th, here's the ZBA agenda, again, that needed to be posted. Finally got it. November 16th, again, email. This was me thanking him saying that he had posted. Thanks times three. On November 17th, hey, Pat, you did not change the time and it still says 6:00 p.m. That meeting on Saturday, the 19th, is at 10:00 a.m. Please correct ASAP. This was due to the due diligence of Mr. Facto.
Well, I like that word.
Yep. Who wrote that in your email to me or your text message to me. Okay? Explaining that it still was not posted correctly. And I actually was at another job, so I couldn't do much about it then other than at that point in time, I asked him if he could check the agenda to make sure the agenda was posted correctly. Did I not?
Am I being interrogated?
No, I just want to make sure that we're all good.
Of course I did. But yet that wasn't corrected. But anyway. Doesn't that?
So again, I got this back as he knew. I said at 10 o'clock at night, I would stop back down to the office. And here is the November 17th, 2022 at 10:04 p.m. resending that email to Pat. And he said it was up. Okay? Again, I don't have control of the website. That was full of inaccuracies and I did not post the letter directly. It was posted through the website manager. There were multiple reasons why this needed to be addressed. Okay? First of all, we could have went full over that meeting. Okay? It took Donna and I almost the better part of a whole day to make sure that we could have, hold this meeting and do it correctly. And that was after contacting three different attorneys, including the Association of Towns. It's important to conduct the business of the town. It is important to the residents to make sure that we can conduct the business of the town. Okay? So when a meeting is not being able to help, to be held, it does hurt the town. It hurts the residents of the town and it doesn't allow us to pay for our bills. But moreover than that, there was a resolution that night to hire a employee for Mike Snyder at the Highway Department, which couldn't, couldn't be done. Okay? So that affected not only that employee and when his starting was and when his state retirement date might have been, but also affected his pay and his benefits. Moreover than that, we were looking at a two-day storm coming up, which I appreciate Mike, all the work he did to, with the shore help that you had to get the roads taken.
You got it done.
So Donna also put the health and safety of the residents at risk. Okay? And that is the type of stuff that we try to avoid by making sure that we can conduct our business and do it in a timely fashion, at least as timely as we are allowed to do.
Are you done?
That's why we really need a website that works. For years, when we're saying that we did due diligence, it makes no sense because you're saying it's through no fault of the town. It's the fault of the website that two months ago I was, brought it up, three months ago I brought it up, two years ago I tried the website, it didn't work. Okay. In other words, that vendor should have been replaced as incompetent a long time.
First of all, we'll hold the public comments at the end. But secondly, okay? I don't get to just fire this guy. Okay? He was done, he was hired by a motion.
Mr. Facto could put a motion on the table anytime to fire this guy. He never has once, yet he walks out of meetings. That's absolutely ridiculous. This whole thing's a farce.
Well, could I say, well, go ahead. But that's okay.
You could bring a motion to the table anytime to fire this webmaster, could you not, to this board? And you've never done that once.
Well, he could.
You could. You're the one that. Anyone could. Any one of you guys could. So it's not on the supervisor, it's on the board. No, I'm not, but it's not a one guy, it's on the whole board.
It doesn't make sense what you're saying.
No, it does. It's the entire board.
I mean, it's a discussion for the town.
Hang on, before this gets out of order, we can't have everybody talking at the same time.
Thank you.
And really, we should hold public comment after.
Well, I am going to take an opportunity to defend what you've said here. I'm not going to wait till public comment time.
If you do not follow the rules here, we can have your.
Well, you seem to have the same problem. You don't follow the rules very well either.
Again, we have.
It's late Tuesday night. If Mike had hired that guy Tuesday night, was he approved by civil service and been checked out by DOT and everything? He was ready to go in that truck Wednesday morning.
He was.
Could I talk before he gets removed?
Well, as long as he continue with the meeting on a drill, that would be great.
Anyway, the other night, okay, no matter, the way you're looking at, you're kind of actually blaming me for leaving in a way.
No, I wasn't.
Well, sort of, sort of. You got to read the letter again here. But anyway, I'm not ashamed of leaving the other night because I had no answer to this. Actually, the meeting should have been adjourned until you contacted an attorney that night. And then we could have proceeded with having the meeting. But you're putting all of this on me to sit in a meeting that was possibly an illegal gathering and I just decided not to do that. Now, it isn't a big deal. It was just Tuesday night and here we are Saturday morning. We're ready to conduct town business right now. So as far as me apologizing to the public, I've never missed a town board meeting and it was a decision that I did make on my own. And I'm not going to apologize for it because I had absolutely no guidance. Our town attorney wasn't here. Okay? The Association of Towns, we couldn't call them at that hour. So I did the right thing. I did the right thing by leaving. And I'm sorry that the quorum was, that we couldn't make the quorum when I left. But yet, could I really stay if it wasn't a proper meeting? Not really. I did the right thing. And I don't want to talk about Facebook or any posting. We'll be here all day. It's not even relevant to the town board. We're here to conduct town business. That's all.
What is relevant though is he made accusations publicly and I'm going to defend them.
Well, I defended mine. Go ahead.
Because he stated that however that posting he made, that letter, a point the finger at everybody but the chief operating officer of this town who's sitting in that chair has full control to make the agenda, he could put it online, a finger pointing letter, but he couldn't put up an agenda. Today's agenda is effective. It's not properly dated, no proper time. So people look at that and they say, whoo, this meeting already happened, you know, on the 15th. So that's defective. The New York State town law states that to call a special meeting, you need a written request from two councilmen to the supervisor requesting that. You see, now he knows it all. He knows better than what the town law says, you know? But he's going to point the finger deflecting the blame to everybody else, but the man is sitting in that chair. He is the final word here. It's his decision to get rid of that webmaster and get somebody in here that can do it.
That's not true.
It is true.
The town board has full discretion on who they hires the webmaster. It's not Kevin's decision.
Right.
But the chief operating officer, he has the right. I'm talking about voting. But he's always got something to say about it. And I'm just. I just, well, I'm. Well, it's me depending what you have accused of.
I thought you were done. Go ahead.
No. So it all falls to you as far as I'm concerned. You can bring it up for a vote, like you said, anybody, but you're the main function here. You're the man in that chair running the place.
Reg could make a motion right now.
Why don't you be quiet while I'm talking? I am telling you to be quiet. Because it's none of your business what we're saying here.
Let me tell you something. You could bring a motion right now.
I understand that anybody can. But he is the chief officer. He runs this place.
Reg, bring a motion right now to fire the webmaster.
He can make, he can make purchases up to $10,000 on his own. Fire him and make your own decision.
I suppose I could.
Then do it.
The town attorney, once again, isn't here.
So we can't conduct.
I would turn around and ask him.
We probably start elect.
Do I want to get rid of the webmaster? Sure I do.
Get out of hand. I'm going to answer those questions that were posed to me and then we're going to move on.
The problem is the webmaster, right? Right. So if we've solved the webmaster problem, get rid of the webmaster, that's 90% of the problem.
And that needs to be done by a motion of this board.
Well, I'm sure you can get a new webmaster for under $10,000 a year. And he can authorize up to $10,000 a year.
I have asked politely four times for you to stop.
Yeah.
So they don't have to remove you. Okay? All right, to answer Mr. Facto's questions, all right? I never asked you to apologize, Mr. Facto.
Good, good. I'm glad you clarified that because I've not done it. So, good.
Are you going to allow me to speak now? I didn't.
You sure can.
I never asked you to apologize. Matter of fact, in the letter, it clearly stated in there that you on the vice of Mr. Donah felt that you should not move forward. Okay? It's clear as day saying that at that point in time.
I never consulted with Mr. Donah. Mr. Donah is not on the town board.
Are you going to keep talking or?
You left on Tuesday night at the consultation of Richard Donah.
Right.
He brought up that as a little meeting and he walked out.
Were you here?
I watched it on video. He's got it on YouTube. You can watch it. It's great.
Thank God he puts stuff out.
Yeah, right. But I'm just saying, I watched it. It was great.
Because we have the website.
You took the consultation.
Your website. The website is like.
The fact of the matter was, you took advice from a town resident and walked out.
A Democrat.
At that.
No, he took advice from the written material.
And secondly, I'm not here to lose what's going on. I'm just trying to address an issue. Okay? And hopefully after this, it's done. All right? Again, I never asked you to apologize. I respected your opinion to leave. Okay? I clearly stated in there that after that happened.
Kevin, I'm back here again. I'm ready to conduct town business. I don't need to hear any more of this. It's over with. Let's move. Let's move on.
I still have to answer these questions that were posed to you. So again, I never asked for any apology. And I again put in there exactly what happened that night. As far as the posting, the posting is pertinent because again, that is a direct reflection on this board. All right? So it is very important to answer those questions and to set the record straight.
Are you responding to Facebook posts or to internal members that weren't allowed to?
He's talking about the Facebook posts.
Okay, so unless you have a verified Facebook account, it could be his 13-year-old nephew posting. If we're down to like talking about what's on Facebook.
I didn't ask, again, you guys to talk until after. All right?
Accounts tomorrow.
Mr. Randy, I'm asking you not to disrupt the meeting. Quit. Please.
All right. And you're the only board member, so be careful.
Sure.
Okay, and as far as.
Excuse me, Mr. Facto, Mr. Facto, I'm sorry. No, I'm going to have something to say. Mr. Facto?
Yeah.
You tell a member of the public and he is sitting here as a member of the public, as a constituent, as a taxpayer, and you remind him of his position with this town.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And you, excuse me, and you use the words, "I would be careful." I'm sorry. Now I'm going to have something to say to you.
That's good advice.
Okay? I will not sit in this chair and be lectured to by you or anyone else about what I should be careful about in my life. Do you firmly understand that?
You can.
And that goes, and that goes for anyone. Excuse me, that goes for everyone that's sitting over here looking at you. We will not be reminded.
Please.
If you're crossing the street and somebody says be careful, you can either say thank you or you can get mad about it.
No, this is crazy.
The last thing you know about this. The open meetings law, you are wrong about, as much as you like to quote it. Okay? Two councilmen can request. I can also request it. Okay? So it doesn't take two councilmen to hold a special meeting because I also have the ability to do that. So read your open meetings law that you like to quote so well.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll interpret it any way it works well for you.
That is exactly spelled out in black and white in open meetings law.
It does say in writing. Are those available?
It was in writing. It was done electronically and it was done with an envelope and they were, every council member answered. Every council member answered, which I have all the emails up.
Which two members submitted in writing the request for the special meeting today?
It was. It was put into their, it was put into their boxes here.
No, I'm asking which two members requested in writing.
Supervisor did.
Yeah, but did you request in writing?
Yes.
Yes.
Because that's what it says. Two members have to request.
Yes, I requested it in writing.
And who else requested it in writing?
It, two members.
What board member? I'm just asking.
Okay, so.
It's two board members or the supervisor can request it. So the supervisor requested it in writing to two board members. No, the supervisor.
That's not how it reads.
Yeah, it does.
It is.
You want me to go get it?
That's how the state law.
Yeah, go get it. There's a law. And this is, here it depends, this will be the last meeting that we will follow our policies. Okay? That were adopted for how to run a meeting. This will be the last time a meeting down here gets hijacked. Okay?
It's not hijack. We're town residents.
I understand. And there is a explicit written policy that this town board adopted on how meetings are to be handled.
Where can we get that? The website?
You can get that right from me.
I need that so that I can follow those rules. I can't follow the rules if I don't know.
I understand public discussion.
Well, you get a chance to speak after the fact, when everything's done and settled, then you get a chance to speak. When resolutions are all passed and everything's done, then you get a chance to speak.
I do want to obey a rule. I just need to know what they are.
By open means, why?
And even when they concocted this, it even put a time limit on how long you can speak.
Well, seeing we're on this topic, there are towns that allow public input at the beginning of the meeting. Well, seeing we're on this topic, there are towns that allow public input at the beginning of the meeting. They, and then they allow it at the end of the meeting.
We do also.
Okay, well, that's what they're doing, I think.
No, they're not because there's a written policy and that would be under communications and petition.
Oh, you mean our file policy.
Who wants to say it? Or do you want to read it, Kevin?
At the beginning.
Okay.
They're supposed to drop a letter to the town clerk, asking to be, have a communication or petition in front of the board at the beginning of the meeting.
At the meeting.
That's the first part. Then the second part of our rules were that.
That's in the county legislature.
They would allow them to speak at the end, in up to three minutes, more time granted if the board felt it was needed. But this is, this cannot continue and they are not part of the board. We are the elected board. So we still have to build and conduct business in a timely fashion. We're here at ten thirty on a Saturday morning trying to do just that. And most people have better things to do than to hang out down here on a Saturday morning. So this should be a very, very structured and quick meeting because it's even a special meeting.
And I can just quickly, really quickly, address your concern honestly. Mr. M D and I just got done a zoning school in Lake Classic. That's why I made that comment to him. He wrote up with me and we had a conversation. I'm certainly not opposed to Mr. M D.
Reg, you have a right to explain yourself. But what, but what I'm here to tell you is without the context of what preceded prior to your comment, and I didn't have the context, you told what I view as a member of the public. Excuse me, you told what I view as a member of the public and a taxpayer to be careful. That's inappropriate language to be used at a town board meeting.
Alright.
Okay, please, please understand that.
Okay.
As you don't know any context of what happened to me earlier today, I nor have pre-context to much of it.
Honestly, I don't even know you.
I do. Reg, you don't have to know me. I will introduce myself if you.
But I know him.
So he came in.
He's a friend of mine.
Came in.
Anyway.
Well, one more thing and I'm done.
Thank you very much.
You make an issue out of what Reg said, but nobody made an issue out of what remark he made over even being a Democrat.
No, I did.
No, so they, go ahead and make the meaning.
I said.
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. I gave it. Apologize.
I'm sorry, Richard, that you're down.
There you go.
Sir, you can't, sir, you can't tell somebody to have a specific comment about anything.
Alright, alright.
But when you say.
Also drop the F bombs.
I will have.
I can say the F bomb protects the speech.
I hear this. So you can say the word careful.
Gentlemen and ladies, I will clear this whole wall, alright? We still need to move forward with the business. Please. Be respectful to each other. Please be respectful to the board. We will be respectful to you, okay? But we cannot have chaos, alright? Go ahead.
Alright, just for clarification, chapter three of town law, three, four types of meeting. B, special meeting. A town supervisor may on his or her own call a special meeting at any time by giving the other board members at least two days' written notice specifying the time and place of meeting. Alternatively, if two board members submit a written request for a special board meeting, the supervisor may schedule a special meeting within ten days of the request. See Town Law sixty-two, two. Business conducted at a special meeting held without two days' notice is valid as long as the councilman had actual notice of the meeting attended and participated.
Is that Article sixty-two you're reading?
No, that is town law.
Yeah, but is that in the heading? Is it Article sixty-two?
No, it's town law, chapter three.
Town law doesn't supersede state law.
This is state law, town.
That's what we're asking.
Yeah. This is town law.
There's town law, there's village law. And we're obligated by the state laws to follow town law. We're not a village, we're a town.
It's Town Law sixty-two, two.
Yep, sixty-two, two is in there, yep.
Yeah, I'll punch that up when I get home.
Again, you are half right. If a, if two councilmen, it takes two, if two councilmen would like to bring up a special meeting, they do exactly what you said. As a supervisor, I can call a special meeting as long as I get, two days in advance and as long as they get it in route. Alright?
Which I looked at and we did get.
And these are all the emails that I received back from, and the confirmation that they knew it was in their box. A hard copy. Alright, we can move on with the communications. Side news, unfortunately, after we did apply for the two thousand and two, which actually would have been awarded in two thousand and three, New York State WIA grant. This year, they, again, they cut them back, but they split the program for water with immediate health issues. I think that's why it got split for like PFOA and PFOS issues. So it says, "Good afternoon Supervisor Randall. As you may be aware, the two thousand and twenty-two New York State WIA awards have been announced. Unfortunately, it appears that the town was not selected for an award in this round. It looks as though there was only about a third of the funding available in this round compared to the previous ones. Only seventy-three awards were made across the entire state. Additionally, it appears that the vast majority of the awards were allocated to projects that address immediate health and safety threats such as PFOAs." Unfortunately, we did not get that WIA grant. Um, I got a communication back from, um, Brian Davies. Uh, this is in regards to Mr. Facto's, um, request looking into the Rixanav, okay? He goes, "I looked back through the results of Rixanav and found only one property exceeded the MCL for PFOA. I sent an email to New York State Department of Health to require, or to, excuse me, to inquire if any additional investigation will be performed. I reviewed the water line plans," that's on the other issue, "the water line plans for the Rixanav." And he's waiting for the revised, revised plans to be there. Again, uh, that hinges on, um, I think they're pretty much looking for where a few of the septic systems are so that it does not, um, the plans don't have to be shown on, the septic systems have to be shown in the plan to show that it doesn't interfere with the local septic systems up there. Um, I received an email back from the county. Uh, this came from Mr. Zerlow. This is in regards to the sand road, PFOA, PFOS issue. We've been working on this, I forgot, about two and a half months going on, maybe three months. Uh, it looks like the last markup that we sent back to the county, um, they pretty much agreed to all the changes. I will get you guys a copy of this, okay? Because I just got this. And, um, uh, we are going to request a couple of words, again, be added back in that are not there, but it looks like we're moving, uh, forward on that progress. Again, that the sand road does not have public water today. Uh, it would be up to the residents up there to allow us to create that special district. Though the wells themselves are owned privately that, um, have the issues with the PFOA and PFOSes up there. So we're trying to resolve the issue, um, by getting a water line up the sand road to help out those residents so they can get to drink the water.
Do you think that could start next year? Possibly?
Again, Mr. Dona, I'm going to ask after all the stuff that happened this morning, if we could ask those questions after. I don't mind if you write them down.
Well, it's not a controversial one.
No, I know it's not. I'm just trying to stay within the guidelines. I have no timeline, I, until they come up with a fund. There's funding that is being worked on right now. I know they applied for WIA also. Also, I believe that there is a private industry that will be also helping with some of that water line. So there's multi municipalities involved with this. We have to get an MLU with the town of Plasberg also to allow us to get about fifteen more thousand gallons a day from them because we get a water from them. Um, so they would have to pass a resolution and we would have to sign a contract with them to allow to even get the water. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that has to happen with that, like everything ago. But, uh, we're very close to a member, an MLU, a member of the understanding, okay? So we're close to that, alright? So, um, as long as we're still back and forth, I don't want to get into the specifics. Those are the general outlines of it, but it's something that I've been working on for quite a while now. I know you know I've been working on it for three years. I've been here just about. Okay, um, good news. Uh, we applied for a CDBG grant, uh, the Town Council Falls, for a housing rehabilitation program. I just got word, although I do not have the signed, the documents from DocuSign yet. They haven't sent that to me yet. But I do have that, so it looks like we did get that grant. On behalf of the Housing Trust Fund Corporation, HTFC, and the Office of Community Renewal, OCR, it is my pleasure to inform you that the application submitted as part of the two thousand and twenty-two New York State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Housing Round, has been, has been selected for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar award, so a quarter million dollars. OCR has reviewed more than ten mil, have, excuse me, I can't read now. OCR has awarded more than ten million as part of the CDBG funding round for a variety of projects that address local affordable housing needs. These investments in home ownership opportunities and home rehabilitation programs will contribute to community revitalization and improved quality of life for the working families of New York State. A grant agreement will be transmitted separately for this award. Please be advised that no work can be performed, no any costs committed or incurred prior to the execution of the grant agreement with HTFC and approval of all required environmental review records and materials. HTFC rece, receive, excuse me, reserves the right to rescind an award and be obligated funds for projects unable to satisfy all requirements. OCR program staff will conduct, will contact you to outline the procedures necessary to advance the project. Should you have any questions in interim, please contact the Office of Community Renewal at, and their number, five one eight four seven four twenty fifty seven. So that is good news for some of the residents in our town that really do need help. Maybe a whole bunch of work. You'd be used probably the most records intensive out of all. Um, I won't bore you with this whole letter, but I'll give you a breakdown, the first little bit of it. Potential, um, sponsor. The governor's five-year capital program continues the Bridge New York program at least an increased funding level of two hundred million per year. This letter announces the availability of funding and makes you aware of key aspects of Bridge New York program. The New York State Department of Transportation, New York State DOT, is implementing the Bridge New York program through the existing capital program planning process, not the statewide solicitation used in recent years. This approach will continue to use many, but not all, of the elements of the prior Bridge New York, uh, program process. Eligible sponsors remain the same and include any city, county, town, village, or other political subdivision, including tribal nations government authorized to receive and administer state and federal transportation funding. The program remains intended to focus on locally owned structures. This goes on and on and on, into the project after. It would do to see if any of this is applicable to us, okay? Um, annual review with PERMA is completed, um, basically every three years with selective, they look at, um, which is our, our insurance, one of our insurances here. We have PERMA and selective. Um, what happens is, uh, they go out to, put it out to bed. So the review of most insurances have been completed by me. When I talked to our local agent, he said we were up on our third year this year. So he will be in the best interest of the town, um, soliciting for other quotes of other insurances. Uh, there's maybe three or four nationwide that do insure fire departments or towns. So, um, like I said, the list isn't long. So right now, as far as, um, the information I received from him, it looks like the selective is pretty much right where everybody else will be. But again, we won't know until I get those quotes back. So that's part of making sure that we're not paying more than we should or shouldn't have for our insurance. So that is being taken care of now. Received a letter from, uh, New York Rural Water Association. Greetings, New York, um, Rural Water Association members. This is to advise that NYRWA announces membership due increases. At the request of NYRWA CEO, then NYRWA Board of Directors recently approved a one percent annual membership dues increase set to begin January first, twenty twenty-three. And this letter goes on and on and on and on too. But basically that's what, it would be an extra one percent for cost for rural water. Which we are, all three districts right now are part of. Starter communication. This letter will serve as a notice that on or around November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, Spectrum Northeast LLC will launch Fox weather satellite feed to high definition on channels one sixty and two seventeen on the channel lineup, serving our community. To view a current spectrum channel lineup, visit their website at www.spectrum.com/channels.
Town boarder got twenty-five hundred dollars for that.
Huh?
I said the town boarder got twenty-five hundred dollars for that one.
Alright. Okay, that's all I got for those. Alright, monthly reports. That brings us to monthly reports. Uh, can I get, obtain a motion to file the monthly reports?
Motion.
Discussion.
Sure, go ahead. Can we get a motion on both?
Sure, okay, second. Alright.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, regarding, uh, was there a report in there from code enforcement?
No, code enforcement unfortunately is still, I heard he's pretty sick. So, um, he was not able to give me a monthly report. Actually, we're back. Again, his reports are always a month behind because he finished up the previous month and that's when we get it.
Okay.
He was, he is not lost. He still is very ill.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Can I?
Roca. Um, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I just broke in my notes. All right, um, receipts. Town clerk, eight hundred and two dollars. Macy Lane Water, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Morrisonville Water, four thousand one hundred dollars. Woods Mills Water, one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Justice Barber, one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Justice Van Artweck, one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Cash receipts, eight dollars and three cents. And that was, uh, a return of the remainder of a, um, served, uh, papers being served on an individual, um, for quotes. When they ask for a certain amount upfront, what they don't use, they give you back. So can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Facto, selected by Mr. Newton. Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, Vincent, are the planning boards on anymore? I have none. Uh, department reports, councilman?
One of the things I would like to see is find out, do we need a couple work bees to get some stuff ready for the festival and everything? Couple work bees?
What's that?
Do you want a couple work bees to try to get a couple, uh, things ready for the, uh?
The, the December fourth?
December fourth and everything.
Yeah, yesterday, um, I was down here from nine thirty to four thirty. Yeah, I got the Christmas tree done. Thank you.
I saw you.
I even enlisted some help from my son-in-law to be.
I didn't know who else you were with. I just saw, I was like, there's Kevin putting the lights up. Yes, they're gonna do the Christmas festival again.
Yeah, it was what we received last year, and so we're going on, hopefully making that annual event. Um, so we got that one done, and then we went down to River Street and got the, uh, gazebo lit. Uh, unfortunately, the, there were over seven strands, even though they were all brand new last year. Uh, seven strands on this tree that I had to run down and replace.